The meeting is ordered. Please rise. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. If you please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the rolls.
Alderman Violet?
Here.
Alderman Begley?
Here.
Alderman Bassow?
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Here.
Alderman Key?
Here.
Alderman McGrogan?
Here.
Alderman McGovern?
Here.
Alderman Clifford?
Here.
Yours, sir.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have a special presentation. My pleasure to have the Car Classic Committee and the Beautification Committee. Bob Starzak, if you want to come to the podium maybe here and... Why don't you go up to the...
First of all, Bob Starzak, we have been running, helping with the car show now for the last 20 years in different facilities. This was our 20th show we have put on this year. I would really like to thank the city for having us, Public Works, police, and the art. They are a big intricate part of the show, and then, you know, whatever we give them, we thank them wholeheartedly. But the main thing is, we've had three sponsors that have been with the show each and every single year, and I'd like to recognize that. If they would, you know, come up, it was Capri, Calamine Auto, and Noral Jewellers. They have been our support for the show for each and every year for 20 years straight now. Can you come up, please? I don't want to get negative, please.
Calamine, here.
Page.
Honestly, well, gee. This is appreciation for us for 20 years sponsoring the show.
Thank you.
Even though...
Get a picture.
Get a group shot.
Get a group shot.
We made one for you, too, Bob, because you did so much for 20 years as well.
Jeff, do you want to get... Jeff, do you want to get a shot of him?
Yeah.
He's not going anywhere.
Another picture there of group pictures.
Group picture.
Jeff's going to take it.
Where do you want it to sit?
Yeah, well, personally, come on, come on.
And then, I'd like to recognize some of the people, the main people this year that put on the show. I mean, we're down to a committee that's very skeleton and very, you know, not the youth like we used to have 20 years ago. I like to have Lois Durant, Gary Durant, Jan Koppi, and Anne Grisadas. Brian Vaughn's not here, he didn't show up.
Oh, that's good.
Is that good?
Brian Vaughn, I'll make sure he gets it. And Anne will get this tomorrow. She had another meeting she had to go to. But these are the four people that basically put on the show this year. They do the major work. But like I said, the Beautification Committee, every single year, they are there in supporting us all the way through. And the volunteers we have in the city to come up and help us with this is, you know, there's no way possible we could not do it without volunteers. And I say, this is the small committee that we have now. Like I said, we do need some younger people in there. Could please...
Thank you, Daniel, for your...
Well, I really, personally, first of all, I'd like to personally thank you, Bob, for your time and effort. You know, you're the stalwart of this whole car show every year, and I know you keep... Every year, you say this is your last year, and I hope it's not, but I want to speak to the fact that we do need younger, we need more volunteers. I mean, this has come down to, it's hard to run this thing with a handful of people. We need, the more people we have out there, the more organized it gets, and people can get in and get out. But it actually helps, and it's good to get out and help meet your neighbors, too. I mean, it gives you time to get out there and meet people in town instead of just waving at them as they go down the street in front of your house. Get out there and talk to people and see what's going on. So I want to thank the Car Committee and also the Beautification Committee. You guys do a lot of things other than just the Car Classic, but this is what makes our town what it is, just the volunteers we've had historically and the volunteers we need going forward. So just take some time out there and please pitch in if you can. So again, thanks again, Bob, for everything, and Committee, too. And sponsors, thank you so much. Without you guys, it wouldn't be a show at all, obviously. So we want to get people on Harlem Avenue. That was, the whole intention originally was to get people on Harlem Avenue to recognize the businesses that were there, and we think we've done that, and we'll continue to do it every year as we can. So again, thanks a lot, appreciate it. Great. All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, guys. All right, moving right along. First thing on our agenda, I need a consent calendar, I need the approval of minutes of the City Council meeting from September 5, 2023, the approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending September 15, 2023. Move by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Violet, discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. No sealed bids tonight, nothing I have got to update. I do have, I had a liquor commission hearing last week. Maria's Tamale's on Harlem Avenue was, came in for a liquor license. They've been in operation for about a year now, isn't it?
A half.
A year and a half, okay, and they think that serving margaritas will help their business, so we're going to try to help them out tonight if we can. We have one of the representatives there tonight, if anyone has any questions, but what I would like to do is entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance increasing the number of Class A liquor license by one for Maria's Tamale's and Cap'n Ranos.
Still moved.
Okay, move by Alderman, thank you for that, it worked. Move by Alderman Begley?
I have my margaritas in town.
Second by Alderman Key. Any discussion?
You can say it.
Roll call.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Okay, carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. Good luck with your liquor sales, and too. All right, clerk, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right. City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the treasurer's report for the period ending August 31, 2023. The general fund began August with $5,564,786. Revenues totaled $965,054. Expenses for the month were $997,722. Other source use, $7,066, giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $5,539,184. Total of all funds began the month with $26,835,514. Revenues for August totaled $2,152,615. Expenses were $1,756,293. Other source use, $109,026, giving a total in all city funds of $27,348,63. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, need a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. City Attorney?
No report.
Any communications, anyone here? Citizens wishing to address the council tonight, anyone? Standing Committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Mayor, if there was one person that wanted to make a statement.
I'm sorry, Eileen, I'm sorry.
Sir, can I give a little plug?
You sure can.
Okay, well, I'll sit here.
Give your name and address first, then.
Eileen Long, 213485 Turtle Pond Lane. The Palisades Women's Club is having their annual blood drive this Thursday at the Palisades Recreation Center from 2:00 to 6:30, and walk-ins are welcome.
Very good. Well, thank you. All right, keep that in mind, Thursday now?
Thursday.
This Thursday, okay, great. Thanks, Maureen. All right, any other citizens? Alderman McGrogan.
Mr. Mayor, we have no report on our finance this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Bassow?
Yes, Mayor, as you can see, I have no items on the agenda this evening, but I would like to remind everyone that the upcoming meeting of the Public Safety Committee for the 26th has been canceled. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley?
No report this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman McGovern, planning and zoning?
No report, Mr. Mayor, but also the planning and zoning committee for, next one is also going to be canceled.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Key, recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve $47,230.50 for the first installment of the 2023-24 membership contribution to the Southwest Special Recreation Association, which we also know as SWISRA.
Second.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Begley, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Bassow?
Here. I'm present.
I mean, I.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
And then, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to SWISRA in the amount of $8,475.60 for summer camp inclusion services.
Move by Alderman Key?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley, discussion? Roll call?
Yeah, that's...
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
And just as a reminder, both of those last items are money that the city receives from ADA funds, and we redirect that money to the services that are provided by SWISRA. I'd like to make a motion to approve a proposal from Williams Architecting, an amount of $170,000 for design, development, construction document plans, specifics, and bid proposal permitting bidding, construction, observation, and grant administration work to be completed for the Palispool project, and this is a project that goes along with an award from OSLID grant of $600,000 that we received with this project in mind.
Move by Alderman Key, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
No.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve permanent outfield fence on Power Softball Field One. Power Softball will pay entire amount of project and indemnify the city of Palisades, its elected officials, employees, and agents from any and all liabilities, claims, and causes of action as a result of the construction, installation, maintenance, and operation of the project, and hereafter.
Move by Alderman Key, I'm sorry, second by Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Okay, discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I've got a, first off, field number one, is that the eastern one?
That's the western one.
The one to the west?
The one to the west.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Why would they want to have a permanent fence in a city park?
Just like all the parks have permanent fence, the PBO has every field with a permanent fence.
How many?
And they recently installed a scoreboard at that field, and they're trying to, you know, make a demarcation for the outfield.
But how much of a loss, because you have a temporary fence that can come down, how much of a loss of park to the other residents of the city come by making this a permanent fence?
Well, the committee doesn't believe there's going to be any impact on it. The Power Two, which is the field on the east, has a, and will continue to have a temporary structure that can be taken down at any time. If we have an event that we need space for, it can come down right away.
That's what I'm asking, because if you put a permanent fence up on the other side, then that becomes a permanent, and the grass, all the grass that's being used...
Right.
...will not be able to be used by anybody else except for the softball team.
But this fence, more or less, almost a butt's up to the fence from the baseball fields coming out of the, to the west of that, so there's not much usage anyway.
And actually, I'd like to add that we haven't made any commitment to any sort of fence on the east field, because there was a temporary fence up for this past season, and no commitment was made for even a temporary fence yet, as I recall, the language was, "We'll cover that later."
We'll discuss it later, but they've never asked for permission for a temporary fence in the past. I mean, it's just because of the nature of it being temporary, but we've actually discussed this permanent fence over several months in committee, and a lot of the questions that were brought up during the first meeting were answered by the leadership from Power Softball, and the committee felt satisfied with those answers.
And Mayor, if I could just commend our committee, I think that we did a good job kind of coming to an agreement on this, and I think there's been a lot of time spent on it. We invited the Power folks to come out. I commend Matt Fairbanks, he put a lot of work into it, and I think the committee's given some nice thought to it, and we've come to this, the recommendation that we were forced to make.
Yeah, I would agree that having a permanent fence on the east side would not be permissible or would not be recommended, but on the west side, that's not, you really can't use that for any other thing, because you've got the fence coming from the other field anyway, so...
During the discussion, there were pros and cons, like everyone said, everybody has their opinion, their opinion being that they did have on the west side, and the consensus was that a permanent fence would be more favorable to the west versus the east, but the east, under those circumstances, to have a fence, to remain open for other events such as people's soccer and kid's soccer that use those fields over there, and that was agreed upon. It also was agreed that, in here, that if anything, that they left, the dissolved, the league dissolved, that the removal of that fence, and that would be at their cost, that the city would be identified against any injuries or loss for us letting them use that field for their purposes, and the maintenance of their forward would also be incurred by them. So that was pretty much the thing, I don't want to say it was a compromise, but it was all considering they had the scoreboard there, and they've got a major league field in the same as the other, but the other one, as Alderman Violet said, would be still up for discussion, whether a temporary fence could be allowed or not, because right now, the temporary fence is up there, and some people don't like the look, so that sort of deters it away from the side of the park, that that should be taken down later than September 1st, for Labor Day.
Since that was brought up in the first meeting, one of the things that we shared with the leadership from Power Softball was that the temporary fences were not being maintained well, and they were, you know, kind of sagging all over the place, and they weren't very attractive, and there were other alternatives, and they've also offered to buy a new temporary fence for Power Two. So, you know, they've answered, every time we've brought up something, they've been good about answering.
Right.
And that's appreciated.
Any other question? Roll call?
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
No.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question before we get out of Jeff's area. One of the reasons I voted no on number 12, I think it was the number, I was like reading through the minutes, and I would just have a question, is it the only, because it said that this bid was just a couple of thousand dollars more than the previous one, but do we get, like, other competitive bids, like, do we get two or three bids from other consulting? But, I mean, because they, and I think if we do, maybe when people are doing the minutes, we should put it in, because that way you could see that the 170 is maybe a good deal versus, you have no idea, because that's all the minute said, it just said we accepted a deal at 170 that was just a few grand over their prior analysis.
Yes.
And so I think, you know, just because when we have other people on that sit up in Jim's chair, opening up bids, and they're for even maybe less dollars when we're doing roads and other things, you know, we go through a little bit more like analysis of like this company, this company, and that company, and I think for the kind of money, and maybe we have to come up with a dollar amount, that we should actually start doing that to where it's at a certain level, you know, they, you know, because what if this was 600,000, you know? I mean, we, for a lot less, we have Morris Engineering and other people in there, and I just think it's kind of inconsistent that on some things, and I don't care what area it comes out of, but I think it does impact the city's finance, and I just think that that's why we should do it, and that's the reason I voted no. That's all I have to say.
So let me respond to that. Just so you know, the committee has kind of pivoted on this subject, and the last time we went out for bid for something, we opened them at a city council meeting, and I think that the committee as a whole would like to see that continue. If I'm wrong about what I'm about to say, I will correct it, but this went out to bid, and, you know, we sent the information out to different companies, and two of the companies actually combined to do some of this work, and there was only one bid received. And because it was so close, and once again, it's two companies coming together to do the work, that's why it was, we want to accept it, because it was just a couple thousand dollars over the estimate that was given. And, I mean, that happens a lot, you know, the estimates, I mean, when we redid the Recreation Center, you know, we had estimates on everything, and the very first thing that we went out to bid for was 100,000 dollars over the estimate, you know?
I'll just say this, based on that comment, that, I think, those are the kind of comments which, I appreciate the information, because I think that, like, when two companies get together and say, "Let's just combine our offer so we're not competing against each other," you know, I think it raises a question, are you really getting a competitive bid? Because they could say, "We're the only two bidding, we could come up with, let's throw a dart and see where it lands," and to me, I think it's better off to get, especially in those situations, you know, because there's been people that have gotten in trouble in Illinois for like fixing and bidding and stuff like that, and, for instance, road builders, that's what they used to do, you know, is we'll get together and we'll just give them a bid. I'm just saying, you know, maybe we should have a policy that at some level, you know, we want to see more than like one bid or one combined bid, because, especially when it's 170,000 dollars, that's...
But in all fairness, they did go out for bid, and only got one bid back.
Right.
You know, and then, being in line with what the architect's estimate was, I think that was more reassuring that this is, you know, legitimate work.
The other thing, this is a pretty extensive contract.
Yeah.
I mean, it's covering a lot of bases, and a lot of it has to do with, because we're getting an OSLID grant, things have to be handled differently than, you know, if our guys at Public Works are going to...
Well, some companies will not bid it because it's an OSLID grant.
I mean, I think that, you know, the other thing is, because we see a lot of consultant things come through, and they're usually like 35, 40,000, and the 170 just kind of stuck out.
Well, and I think Jeff said, you know, they're going to come to council now from that one.
Yeah, we've made a kind of an agreement at the committee that everything goes to the council, more of an open forum.
Your points won't take them, so...
All right. Done.
That's it. Move to construction, Alderman Clifford?
Okay, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion approved. First, a second payment to Lindahl Brothers, Inc. for the 2023 MFF program in the amount of $628,723.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Alderman Bassow, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Next, a motion approved to Aries, Inc. for installing 24-inch storm drainage line in the amount of $19,660.28.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bassow, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
And a motion approved Morris Engineering for engineering services of various projects throughout the city in the amount of $7,818.98.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second? Second by Alderman Bassow, roll call?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
And with that, our road program has pretty much winded up, a few little items to be done. We're working on next year's road program and cost. But one announcement is that the city is partnering with Trinity College to replace the culverts of 86 inches and, or 96 inches in diameter under 123rd Street crossing Navajo Creek. The work will begin yesterday, September 19, and anticipated completion around November 20th, 2023. During the construction, 123rd Street westbound will be closed from Natchez to the school entrance until that time. We hope to be done with it, we just gave a later date, we think we'll be done sooner than other, but that's a cooperative of, pretty costly item, about half million dollars, which isn't really, with the cooperative and some grants and everything, it's not going to cost our taxpayers of the city hardly anything, if nothing. So it's a good project, didn't cost us anything, so. And the road program, again, that came in, we were a slight tad over, $13,000, because we did some, we did some necessary extra work to slip through the cracks. Other than that, most of the road programs have been on or under budget. Thank you.
Okay.[1640.95] License permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my apologies for not being there in person, I, I've actually tested positive for COVID, and out of all the healthcare professionals I've come in contact with over the past couple weeks, they tell me that it's really ramping up, so please, everybody, for yourselves and your families, be careful out there, and take on the precautions. I would like to make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County Health for the provision of environmental health inspection services beginning December 1st of 2023 through November 30th of 2024.
Move by Lewandowski?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is our yearly renewal of Cook County conducting house inspections of our
Right. Okay. Roll call?
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Basso?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve a variance for an existing residential driveway at 7620 Carmichael Drive to be widened more than the code allows.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley, discussion?
Question?
Yes.
This is the, this is the picture of the building. Now, section 9426, he's putting a 20-foot car garage around the back. Is, and he just put a front, new front porch on the front. Is he going to knock off the garage and put in an office or some kind of a, a usage for the house? Because if he is, according to what he signed for his affidavit here, chapter 9426, section C., if an existing garage is converted into living space, or when a garage is removed, the driveway must be removed and constructed according with existing ordinances. Existing driveways may remain until such time as the new garage is constructed, at which time the existing driveway leads to a new garage, or when the part of the existing driveway can be incorporated into the configuration leading to the new garage, as long as the new configuration complies with the aspects of the ordinance and constructed with the sentence. That's the one part I have a concern with, because he's asking for an extended driveway going all the way from his porch around to the garage that's going to be in the backyard.
There's a thing related to the same thought, is that the total residence square footage of the land cannot exceed 30 feet, 30% coverage on there, and I don't know what the numbers were there, came from the building commissioner or not, that he did that. When this came up, when I was with zoning, this, this came up, and this garage here is, what I use the term shoe-orned, but it was like 60 feet by something, squeezed in off to the side, close to the lot line, and we asked the guy, it wasn't going to work, he was going to have living space, office space above it was one of the questions we asked, why such a height of the building, I'm going to have an office in there, we told him that's the same as having living space there, wouldn't probably not be allowed, he'd be better off to get an architect on the building and just say, I'm planting this building there, with no due thought to that, because the square footage of the garage at the time was actually almost as big as his house, and the committee sent him back, then he came back with the architectural drawings of the garage, and that finally got approved. Now, what the garage means towards the back there, he has a, a configuration of a tree at the one spot, if he came straight back out of the garage, on this side, there's a tree here, you can't see, if he was to come straight this way, he would have to remove the tree. If he is to come out like this, he'd have to come out off the street here, and this would have to curve over to get access to the back here. This part is just some old flagstone here, he called it like new, but that would exceed the width coming over here of, he wants 22 feet, which would come almost six, seven feet into his front yard over here, in front of his front porch, so those are the variances on there. A parking space is like nine feet wide, so 18, 19 feet wide versus 22 would probably be more acceptable, and that's some, that would do there, remove some of the flagstone and return it to green space, and then make, there hasn't been a plan other than him, uh,
That's his revised one.
He's just going to come over at an angle this way, and then up into the garage, so whether it's a straight line or a curve, I don't know what, what he's doing there, but as far as the, the front, they're taking up a lot of yard, that's a lot of asphalt and or concrete to be done.
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
I'm on zoning, and this came to zoning several times. How did it get to a different committee?
Um, Mr. Mayor, may I answer the question?
Sure.
There's a lot of questions on the table, I'll answer the last question first. So, what, what's before the city council today is a variance about the residence driveway, which is, that's kind of the purview of the license, permit, and franchise committee.
Okay.
He has exist, an existing driveway to an existing garage, to answer one of Alderman McGovern's questions earlier, we, we did not get information of what he plans to do with the former one-car garage that's attached to the house, we don't know if he's going to make that into a living space or not, but this is regarding the, the, he currently has roughly about, I don't know, four, four to five feet of flagstone that's installed next to the existing driveway that leads up to the newly constructed porch. What he would want to do is pave over that flagstone to make the driveway uniform with the existing driveway and then the, the driveway leading to the back garage. The, the new constructed garage and the driveway leading to that garage has already been approved by the city council. What's before the city council today is simply whether or not the city council wants to approve a variance widening the driveway, which would essentially be paving the existing flagstone, while he removed the flagstone and paved over the area where the flagstone is existing.
I wrote pass there today, and
Hopefully, everybody heard me.
Yes, we did, thank you.
I wrote pass there, and with the diagram, apparently, he wants to repave where the existing pavement is, the driveway leading up to the old existing garage, replace about five or six feet of stone, of flagstone, with even more pavement, and also make some new pavement connecting the, connecting where the old driveway was to the side of the house, and it looked to me like an, like an awful lot of asphalt, for, you know, for the front of a house. I mean, I, you know, I, I wasn't, I wasn't calculating the percentage, but it looked like a lot. I mean, it looked like, it looked like you could, like, like you could start a limousine company there, as, as, you know, I mean, that's what, you know, that was my impression, and so, I, I don't, I can't imagine liking the look, and I can't imagine it, it being acceptable.
Well, let me ask quick, the alternative to that would be to leave the flagstone there, right?
No.
I mean, I mean, that's what's there now, I mean.
No, he could leave the, he could leave the, if he was, and that to extend the driveway, he could extend the driveway by a certain amount, but when he takes that drive, or extends it, it all buries under use of the existing garage. If he says, yes, I'm going to use that as living space, then the code says that part has to return to green space.
Well, but my
And that would be the whole front of his driveway, but in this case, it's a little different, because of the way he's got the garage.
No, that's not my question, I'm, I'm just making a point of reference here, if we don't approve the widening of the driveway, he's going to have a driveway with flagstone next to it, which he has now, right?
Well, he could, if he just
Well, it's been like that forever, so it's
He has a flagstone.
According to the, according to the driveway ordinance, if you have a sidewalk, you can't have any sidewalk or patios abutting the driveway closer than five feet. If you look at that layout of, of the architecture and the landscaping, the flagstone obviously was a sidewalk leading to the front door. The front, the little front stoop has been reconfigured, so it looks like it's part of the driveway now, but asking for 21 feet in the front of the yard for more parking, this is not a hardship case, that probably could put 20 to 30 vehicles on that property, on the driveway, with the garages and the driveway that he's requesting. So, if he puts the driveway, just replaces the driveway as, as is, it's even oversized according to the code. That's a, that's a driveway for a two-car garage that he has already, that he's only got a one-car garage, but adding, adding that extra five feet to 21 foot wide driveway is going to look like he's parking his vehicles on the front yard, it's going to look like the whole yard is taken up for parking. And as I said, this is not a hardship case, this is, this is another I-want situation that's going on with that property for three or more variance requests. None of them have been a hardship case, it's I-want this, and I don't think we should make, make variances according to I-wants, that's nowhere in the code.
There's one other thing that, when the, the picture that shows the flagstone where it is, it extends past, you know, the flagstone can, it extends past the front porch opening, and if you look at the blueprint pictures of the proposal, it shows that, that the new asphalt would only cover maybe a fourth to a third of that, so it's not going to even cover the flagstone, so we're, the proposal's still going to have, what, five or six feet of flagstone besides the new pavement?
Which, which he can't have, because it is a butt's
And I'm just saying, that's according to the picture, and it's very, it's
You know, what we need to find out is to ask the gentleman, or the building, what is his future plan or use for that garage now or in the present, because that has a bearing on this. If he does it, going to use it and convert it to living space, and use his garage, which is 36 by 24, 884 square feet back there, and adding the length of driveway to totals from the front to the back to the garage of over 73 feet by X amount of feet, that's a lot of paving that's going to be six feet for some of these properties there, so I would suggest that just have the building inspector come back and find out what his future use for that is, to have a bearing on this.
I would say that's certainly an idea, but I don't think that's a good idea.
I think we have a lot of information here this evening, and I don't think there's really sufficient amount for us to vote on, so I think we should probably take, send this back to committee?
I'll second.
I just want to make one comment.
Sure.
I did the math while we were, everybody was coming up with good suggestions, and if you look, the front yard, he does have, you know, it's well under the 33%, because when you deduct for the, the area of the house, which is about 1,600 square feet, and then you also deduct for the driveway, that's, comes out to 752, if you add those two up, it comes out to 2363, and then if you add up the, the width and the length of the front yard only, it comes out to just on, it's around 8,000, so, you know, it's, it's more like about a 25
You're not going to get to 30%, this is, this is a half, half an acre lot.
Yeah, you're better, you're in good shape here on, on the front square footage.
Yeah.
The other thing that, you know, he, it would look better, and it might, would be to have where the flagstones are, to tell them that, on that, you know, it should be some kind of pervious paper bricks or something other than a solid surface, because that would also help those statistics. If I may, once again, the driveway called 30% land coverage is secondary to the size of the garage. The garage, single
Everybody jumped in there. That is, that is no longer the garage, that, this is a driveway leading to the garage all the way in the back, and they cannot have a straight driveway going through, because there's a tree in the way, you'd have to cut down the tree to have a straight through driveway, so to, to access the newly constructed garage, they will drive their car on the existing driveway, and then, which, which leads around the house to the backyard to the new, to the new garage, so it's still a driveway, it's just leading to the back garage. What's in front of the city council today is simply whether or not you want to allow him to pave over the flagstone, or he's going to keep the flagstone that's grandfathered in for that additional space.
Okay.
Mayor, I, I, I'm going to restate, I'd like to send this back to committee, please, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. What's the motion?
Send it back to committee for review and find out the answer to the questions.
Okay. Move by Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Clifford, refer back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion carries, okay. Refer back to committee, Brett.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
All right, sir.
You know, now that that's over, one quick question, it, what would be
We've talked to the committee chairman on it.
Oh, I'll get to him later, don't
Gotcha. All right. Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
No report today, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Business and economic development, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right. Alderman McGovern, cable TV.
No report today, Mr. Mayor.
Any old business, anyone have? Citizens wishing to ask questions? Any new business? entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.